Today is February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is five P. M. And we are in the Bosch Freilich Meeting Room, Mandan City Hall, and it is currently eight degrees below zero. Mr. Newbauer, could you please take the roll?
Commissioners, Schoberg.
Here.
Heinchan.
Here.
Braun.
Here.
Roar.
Here.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. At this time, we will have students from Mandan High, Ryland Kautzman, Braden Fickland, Isaac Saylor, Cate Rothlisberger, and Bridger Fusen lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to start off with an announcement from Shane O'Keefe Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I just kind of had a PSA just for the citizens watching. Mandan Utility just wanted to remind you to check your water meters, check your, uh, your main line coming into your house with these lower temps. We've had a little bit of influx of calls of frozen pipes in the city, so just wanted to put a little announcement out there to make sure, maybe remind you to open that vent you didn't open when winter started and such like that. So, we do have some helpful links on the website, too, on the water page.
Thank you, Shane. Now, we'll, we will have Ryland Kautzman, who will present regarding Career and Technical Education Month.
Thank you, Mayor Freilich, and then good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Riley Kautzman. I have served as the Executive Vice President of Mandan Daca, and today I come before you to ask you to proclaim February as CTE Month in the city of Mandan. CTE and CTE programs are vital in Mandan. One thousand two hundred and fourteen students alone participate in CTE programs in the Mandan High School, and CTE programs are activities that provide students with the skills and knowledge they need to succeed in a wide range of careers. By integrating academic and technical education, CTE programs prepare students in the workforce by offering hands-on experiences that go beyond the textbook. Practical approach helps students understand the relevance of this in their careers and what they are going to do in the future. Additionally, CTE is essential by meeting the demands of the modern economy, and as technology continues to advance, the need for skilled workers in various industries grow. CTE programs equip students with the experiences required to fill these high-demanding jobs, ensuring that our workforce remains competitive on a global scale. To conclude, CTE offers innovation and entrepreneurship for all students. It encourages students to think creatively and develop new solutions for existing problems that can't be found in the textbook. Now, I ask you to proclaim February as CTE Month with a vote. Thank you, American Commissioners.
Thank you, Ryland. I would entertain a motion to proclaim February Career and Technical Education Month.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. With that, February of two thousand and twenty-five is Career and Technical Education Month.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners.
Thank you, Ryland. Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of several meetings. Consider approval of the February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five State of the Cities Quorum.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five Regular City Commission Meeting.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting on February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five, excuse me.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, second by Commissioner Braun. Further discussion done. Roll call.
Commissioners, Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five Special Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Yes. Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no public hearings tonight, nor bids. We will move on to the consent agenda. Look for approval. Or are there any items that you would like removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull Items Two and Three. I'd like to pull Item Ten.
Okay, Items Two, Three, and Ten are, are pulled for further discussion. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda absent of those three items?
I move to approve the consent. I am second for Two, Three, and Ten. That is an exemption, exemption from those.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. So we'll go back to Item Number Two on the consent agenda. Consider the updated utility pipe backfill compaction standards in the city's construction specifications. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Um, yes, we've been working closely with Moore Engineering, as well as Braun InterTech and TerraCon to review and bolster our utility pipe backfill specs. If there's any specific questions I could answer, I would be glad to do so.
Yeah, Jerick, my general question was, who sets these specifications? Is it state or federal?
Um, Mayor Commissioner, we, we set them, we can set them at a local level. The state has their specification standards. Um, so for an example, Memorial Highway generally uses the state's pipe backfill specification standards for the Memorial Highway project. We requested them to add a project note to bring it, bring those standards up a little bit. So, um, it's a little bit mix and match, but we're, we're able to set our own standards.
Okay. So you follow their guidelines, but interject different things that we'd like to see on specific projects?
Correct, yes. When, when we feel, when we feel a specification needs to be addressed for, yeah, for a specific project, we can do that through project notes, but this would be general. This would be for every project that occurs in our city unless otherwise stated. So this would bring everything up, including like our right-of-way work for service line connections to businesses and stuff like that. Um, and the, the effort here is to see less trench settlement across cities, or across the city. So you might see, you might be able to find where service lines have been installed because you can see it in the road because there's a dip there, because the backfill specifications weren't, yeah, high enough.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, consider approval of the plans. This is Item Number Three on the consent agenda. Consider approval of the plans and specification, engineers' reports, and authorization. Call for bids for the two thousand and twenty-five municipal sidewalk improvement project.
Mayor Commissioners, yes, this is our annual concrete, municipal concrete contract. Um, if there's a specific question I can answer, I'd love to do so.
Yeah, Jerick, one thing I'd like to see, um, understand, there's things that come up during every building season, and our building schedule isn't set. You know, with North Dakota winters, it's not set at this time, and it doesn't ever end at this time. So I know that that's a moving target. Um, but I would like to see some, uh, some completion percentages, potentially in this contract, um, where the, the contractor would meet a specific contracted percentage maybe halfway through the construction season and make that commitment to us in their bid. So I'd like to see that terminology maybe in the future contract.
Mayor Commissioner Heinchan, yes, we do have, I have pulled it up on the screen. We have our draft contract that we are going to be providing with our advertisement, and we have an interim completion date of June fifteenth and a second interim completion date of August first. Um, all of the work outlined in the document, or in our advert, or all of the, what we're calling guaranteed work in the contract, which would include public works, jobs, and jobs that we have signed special assessment forms for. Um, half of those would have to be completed by June fifteenth, and half of them would have to be completed by August first. Um, the total contract would have to be completed before December thirty-first, and the work that would occur between August first and December thirty-first would be late additions to the, um, to the contract. We might get volunteer work that's requested by citizens or residents throughout the city. That would be the time period that we have kind of allotted for those unanticipated projects. So we do have interim completion dates with hundred-dollar-per-day liquidated damages set.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Uh, Attorney Oster, do we need to move on each one of these items?
Yes, since they were removed, we'll need to vote on them.
So individually?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go back to Item Number Two, and I look for approval of updated utility pipe backfill compaction standards.
I move to approve the doc.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item Number Three on the consent agenda. Consider approval of the engineers' authorization. Call for bids for the two thousand and twenty-five municipal sidewalk improvement project.
I'll move to approve the two thousand and twenty-five municipal sidewalk improvement project.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item Number Ten, consider approval of a Department of Water Resources funding application. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, this is the, this would be, um, an application to the Department of Water Resources for our Memorial Highway project. Um, our previous applic, previous application for these funds was based on an estimate that we had at the time. That bid date for Memorial Highway was a little dynamic. It had been moving around, and we had, um, set ourselves up for the December State Water Commission meeting. That, the bid date ended up getting pushed past that December Water, State Water Commission meeting. This would kind of rectify that application with realized bid, um, bid dollar amounts, as well as, um, engineering costs that are a little bit more developed at this point in time. But if you have any other further questions, I can answer.
Jerick, um, in reviewing this this afternoon, it appears to me, as an outsider looking in, that, uh, the state folks and, and you guys in engineering worked pretty hard to, um, increase the amount of dollars that the State Water Resources Board was gonna dedicate to the east half of Memorial Highway. Could you review the numbers, please, just, just for, for the people at home, so they know what a wonderful job you guys are doing? You know, there's a time to be humble and a time to blow your own horn, so I'm blowing your horn for you.
Well, yeah. Um, no, I appreciate Commissioner Schoberg, and I'm also appreciative to have you back. I don't know if I should mention that, but it's good to see you again.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Um, our, uh, previous amount for this project was about two point nine million dollars with updated, uh, construction costs from the bids. Um, we were expecting sixty percent eligible funding to be around three point nine million dollars at this time. So, um, it would just be with the, yeah, with the difference in bid costs, uh, State Water Commission is typically supportive of, um, contributing that full sixty percent. So we're, we're gonna try and get it for the city.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. I look for a, a motion of acceptance for Item Number Ten.
I'll make a motion to approve the funding application.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. There is no old business onto new business. Consider approval of the Mandan Police Department applying for the state homeland security grant through the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services to purchase an anti-vehicle barrier system. Captain Haug?
Mayor Commissioners, uh, the police department is asking for permission to apply for this North Dakota Homeland Security Grant, um, so that we can look at purchasing, uh, this vehicle barrier system for downtown when we have our numerous events that occur throughout the year. Um, a little bit about the Homeland Security Grant. This is money provided by the United States Homeland, Department of Homeland Security to the states. This is money that's already been awarded to the state, and I believe it's kind of some leftover money from this year that hasn't been allocated yet, so they reopened the grant. Um, this grant allows, um, local entities, um, to enhance community preparedness and resilience, combating domestic violence, extremism, or planning, training, and awareness. Um, the police departments actually will be submitting our application under enhancing the protection of soft targets, crowded places. So, any questions you have of this particular grant?
So Captain, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This was a comment the mayor and I met with, with the chief and, and Pat here about this, and we had a thorough discussion, and we feel that these things would really enhance, you know, public safety and security and add to how the control of events, especially like during the Fourth of July, and as we have a lot of people in one place, you know, it'd really be a good addition. So, you know, we, we looked at this pretty closely, and the mayor had, you know, meetings with that and fully understands, you know, that this would be very equitable to the needs of our events.
Mayor Commissioner Roar, I agree. Um, this will help us kind of up our security a little bit more, um, as we continue to reinforce our downtown area, um, for the protection of all the people that come and visit our city and our events downtown.
Commissioner Schoberg?
Commissioner Roar, yeah, asked the question I was gonna ask, so we're good.
Captain Haug, how much is the grant that we're applying for?
So for this particular round, we're asking for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, there's only, in this particular round of grants, there's only a total of four hundred thousand dollars. Um, so we kept it to, um, one particular barrier system, um, believing that if we went much higher, it would, would have reduced our chances of potentially being rewarded this grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners? I move to approve the Mandan Police Department applying for the state homeland security grant through the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services to purchase an anti-vehicle barrier system.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes, and thank you, Captain Haug. Appreciate it. Onto Item Number Two under New Business. Consider a Renaissance Zone Rehab Application for Four Twenty Holdings LLC at four eighteen West Main Street. Madison?
Mayor and Commissioners, um, the Renaissance Zone Committee met August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, so it's been a couple of months now. Um, but agenda items included a consideration of the application of an interior remodel in addition with plans for significant interior improvements, as well as potential rebuild of the rear structure. So we have, the first one will be for the rehab project. All them, all three agenda items will be one project, just letting you know. Um, and I also want to let you know that Brandon is online, um, who is doing the project. So when I'm done with this first item, you can ask him questions. All right, so if you can, on the screen, this is, uh, the property we were talking about. Uh, the project consists of a complete teardown of the back building and replacing it with a new building, which would include a basement. Construct an additional five hundred square foot to the two thousand square foot area towards the alley. The new addition would be split into two sides, the east and west sides to the, east and west sides. On the four eighteen east side, there will be a state-of-the-art kitchen, which will service the wine bar, and I will show you those pictures in the next agenda item. Um, and then on the four twenties west side, an additional four office suites, a conference room and a break room will be added. The front of four twenty will remain burger insurance. Included in the scope of work of this addition will be the installation of a new roof on the main building, along with two new kitchens in apartments above, and a sprinkler system with two new furnaces, four new electrical services, and two new gas heaters. And then you can see up on the, on the slide as well, this is kind of the main floor specs of that. Um, so the cost of the project is estimated to be around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our city assessor has estimated the new, the new building value after improvements to be around seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, putting investment in improvements well above minimum Renaissance Zone program requirements of at least fifty percent of the building's value, which is right now three hundred and forty-nine thousand. The applicant is wanting to begin construction this spring of two thousand and twenty-five, but all contingent upon requiring all the city permits that he will need. The Renaissance Zone Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the Renaissance Zone application for four eighteen West Main Street by Four Twenty Holdings LLC as a Renaissance Zone project to include the five-year hundred percent property tax exemption on the value of the building as approved, and the hundred percent five-year state income tax exemption contingent upon receiving all the required city permits. Again, Brandon is online. If you have any questions for this, the rehab portion, and then we will move on to the lease and show you more renderings of the inside.
Any questions for Madison or Brandon? If not, what are your wishes?
Move to approve the application for the rehabilitation of four eighteen West Main Street, the Renaissance Zone project, to include the five-year hundred percent property tax exemption on the value of the building as improved, and the hundred percent five-year state income tax exemption contingent upon receiving all required city permits.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item Number Three, consider a Renaissance Zone lease application for Minneapolis Private Equity LLC at four eighteen West Main Street. Madison?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, so this one will be one of the corresponding lease projects to that first rehab project. Um, we do this because the LLC can be eligible, eligible for an income tax exemption for all income derived from that business. Uh, so, and I can show you the slides now up on the screen, um, but this is gonna be where on the state-of-the-art kitchen would be, with a service of a wine bar. So the Minneapolis Private Equity Group LLC will be running a restaurant on the four eighteen west main sites of the building. The restaurant expected to create ten-plus jobs and bring more traffic to downtown Mandan. And then here are some of the pictures, the renderings that Brandon sent me, just giving you a little idea. Um, like I said, the, it'd be great to have a commercial kitchen in our community. Um, there's lots of startup businesses. There's lots of people that don't have that, those funds right away to start, you know, their own business right away. So it'd be nice to have that opportunity for them to come in and kind of experiment.
Madison?
Yes.
Or Brandon, can you explain, uh, how that commercial kitchen works with startup businesses? Just go into a little more depth. Why, why a commercial kitchen is necessary?
Mayor Commissioners, um, it is necessary because it, we have a lot of kind of laws around here that you cannot just do stuff in your own kitchen and sell it. That, um, it has to be a commercial kitchen. Right now, we have churches, church basements have some commercial kitchen use, um, but not a lot of updates to those kitchens. A lot of cities, like surrounding areas, really look towards commercial kitchens and getting those entrepreneurs and startup, a little place to start. So, and like I said, you can't just make food and then sell it from your own kitchen in your own home. It has to be commercialized.
Okay, so it's all approved by the county health?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? What are your wishes?
I'll move to approve the lease of four eighteen West Main Street by Minneapolis Private Equity Group LLC as a Renaissance, Renaissance Zone project to include a hundred percent five-year state income tax exemption.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item Number Four under New Business, consider a Renaissance Zone lease application by Allstate Radon Services LLC at four eighteen West Main Street. Madison?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, so this will be the last corresponding lease project, um, and this will, will be the Allstate Radon Services LLC. They will be on the four twenty West Main Street side of the building. Um, they are a real estate business, and they will have, they only need a couple offices, but the rest will be available for rent for professionals for office space if they need so. Okay, and the Renaissance Zone Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval for the lease of four eighteen West Main Street by Allstate Radon Services LLC as a Renaissance Zone project to include a hundred percent five-year state income tax exemption. Do you have any questions for me or for Brandon?
Now, just to be in Sherman right direction, so basically, we're getting that one hundred percent five-year state income tax exemption that goes to the business that are gonna be residing within this area, operating?
Mayor Commissioner Roar, yes, so usually with the Renaissance Zone state program, they'll have, um, your, your business that's gonna do rehab, and then what other businesses that are leasing in that. It could be the same property owner that's leasing to himself, but yes, any income money derived at that parcel would be eligible.
Are they transferable? If some, let's say a business is no longer, after two years, not operating, another one comes in, or is asked, is it transferable?
Yes, I believe so. You'd have to, there's some documentations to go through with the state and everything to make sure that they are up to date with all their taxes and good, in good qualifying status and everything, so. But they only have the five year, like, they won't get another five years after, so it will.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Madison. At this time, I need a, uh, motion to approve.
I move to approve the lease of four eighteen West Main Street by Allstate Radon Services LLC as a Renaissance Zone project to include a hundred percent five-year state tax exempt, exemption, state tax exemption.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item Number Five under New Business, consider introduction of the Mandan Art Alley Project. Andrew?
Good evening. Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, I'm pleased to approach you this evening with an update from a working group I'm a part of. Um, for a little bit of history, I guess, before I get into the specific project, uh, the city's been recommended for some time to, uh, better leverage the asset it has in its downtown alleys. Of course, as you're aware, we have a number of, uh, community businesses that have great access and traffic that is generated through our alleys. Um, back in two thousand and eighteen, the city adopted the downtown plan. Within that, it was recommended that, uh, the city lean into placemaking, public art, aesthetic improvements, and things like that. And fast forward maybe six years, a group of downtown business owners and advocates met at the Central Station Bar, I think that was in May or June of two thousand and twenty-four, to sort of revive that idea some more. Um, that's a bit of a bigger project than I'm here to talk to you this evening, which would include more social aspects and, uh, more work to be done. However, uh, this evening, I'm just here to introduce what we'd like to be Phase One of this project. So, uh, working with a group of folks representing the Northern Plains National Heritage Area, which, uh, Mandan is within, Ford Abraham Lincoln Foundation, Morton Mandan Public Library, city, downtown business, community, North Dakota Council on the Arts, and I'm probably forgetting someone, I apologize. Uh, we have devised a plan to get this project in the works, um, thanks to the gracious, um, support from the Northern Plains National Heritage Area and the Ford Abraham Lincoln Foundation, forty thousand dollars. $40,000 worth of grant funds have been dedicated to this project, which the team believes would cover about six or so large-scale murals that could be sliced and diced some as the project continues to develop. But what we would look to be doing with Phase One would be to, and maybe I'll take the screen with the timeline here. What we would like to do is install murals in the alley between Second and First Avenues, which would be the block that has the Copper Dog, the Strawberry Bar, for example, that 200 block of West Main, and install the murals on that block. We selected that block because the concrete surface is in acceptable condition and the building form on both sides of the alley really supports this sort of project, given the kind of the immersive aspect and the placemaking aspect that it has. The other alleys we have have more open space on the north side. So what we would do is we would craft a call for artists to be released in March, have selection happening over the course of April, and work beginning in June. One of the stipulations is that the art relate to the goals of the Northern Plains National Heritage Area, which is generally related to the culture and values and traditions of our region. And it's up to the artist to determine and explain how their piece would kind of make that connection to the overall project. Our goal would be to have Phase One complete by October, and that would include the painting and installation of murals. The project will be coordinated by Molly McLean with Northern Plains National Heritage Area. She's probably the best person for the job in the region and is a very experienced public arts administrator who will be able to assist us in identifying acceptable application methods, as in how should we get this art on the wall, what types of murals, what types of paint, what types of prep needs to be done, very skilled in that realm. Another stipulation would be that one of the pieces be designed and consult with the community and created by the community. So there's a method in which an artist can interview and sort of absorb the values of an area through kind of an engagement effort, and then the public actually gets to sort of participate in painting it, where you could do paint by number in the large scale and then sort of wallpaper them up and have the finishing touches applied by that artist. So we feel that that would tie in very well to our summer event schedule and also just provide another opportunity for community members to have a sense of ownership in this community asset. What could this look like in the long term? I'm going to try and rotate this. I've never had to do this before, so bear with me. On the screen, this is sort of what this could look like in our community at one point in time. This is the rendering from Fourth Avenue Northwest looking to the east. This project will focus primarily on the art. Eventually, the city will need to get to the surface and the lighting and flowers and trees and all sorts of other stuff, but this is a great way to start. I don't have any official asks for you this evening, however, I wanted to introduce the project as there could be additional developments that come that the board needs to be apprised of. Do you have any questions for me?
Mayor Andrew, coincidentally, here tonight, I was looking on YouTube, and this couple had a real good travel thing, they were going through North Dakota, and they were pointing out different things. They stopped in Bismarck, and then they went to Fargo. But anyway, they stopped and they showed Bismarck, they showed the cap, but they also showed their downtown paintings in Bismarck. And they talked about them and showed them how they were, and then they went to Fargo, and it's kind of, I believe it's in Fargo where they showed that. They would, they had a section they would invite, people could come down and put their murals up, but they had specifications. For example, you can't paint beyond this point or beyond this point. It had to have it be in good taste, you know, it cannot be offensive and things like that. But it was a good representation, too, to show how it actually looks when it's done right. And I wish I could know that website to go to, but it was there, and it showed everything you're talking about here. It's really interesting.
Yes, Commissioner Roar, Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar. These projects are relatively common around the country. I see them in my travels. I see them everywhere I go pretty much, and a lot of folks are drawn to murals because they are a visual narration of the culture, heritage, and values of communities.
Get some ideas from the boxcars I passed through here.
That's graffiti. We're going to stay away from graffiti, right?
Mayor Freilich, if we are planning a sanctioned graffiti area, we will let you know.
So this is 35,000, right? This is a grant for 35,000?
Mayor Freilich, the 35,000 is coming from the Northern Plains National Heritage Area. 5,000 is committed from the Fort Abraham Lincoln Foundation.
Okay.
Artists will be paid by the grantor, so the city will not be really touching the funds. However, we will be sort of assisting in the administration of the project.
Okay, and as far as, back to Commissioner Roar's statement, how is the artwork approved? I mean, he said in general, good taste. How, is there, we have a board that's approving this?
Mayor Freilich, we do intend to utilize the project steering committee and possibly solicit the input from the city's community beautification committee. Of course, the property owners who will be hosting the murals will be factored in as well. But the grant does require the pieces have a strong tie to, if I can read it specifically, the content themes will need to be related to the local history and heritage of the Northern Plains National Heritage Area. And there will be a narrative story to explain how that relation is made as well.
Okay.
Andrew, for the folks at home, was the project, I believe several years ago, of painting the utility boxes downtown, was that like a jump-off point for something bigger like your proposition tonight?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Schoberg, for me at least it was. I wanted to kind of get my toes a little bit wet before I do a cannonball with this one, but yeah. Kind of allowed the city to demonstrate its serious attitude towards placemaking and public art in the downtown. Make some preliminary relationships and build a little bit of confidence, and without that project, we wouldn't have been able to get to this point.
So you've got ample experience based on that jump, jumping off point with your, I don't know what the fancy word is, stakeholders nowadays, but, and going back to that graphic that you had on the artist's rendering of the alley, the safety of, for our citizens that use the alley as a walkway after dark ultimately could possibly be enhanced with better lighting, like in this photo, they have the wooden utility poles are painted. So it's not only aesthetic, but it's geared toward the safety of our citizens as well.
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Schoberg, our project team is well-equipped to implement this project, and yes, public art is a well-defined connection between public art and enhancing public safety. It's often a draw that brings people down who are choosing to go to these places and are, they're doing safe sanctioned things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further?
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, I did attend the spring first kind of inaugural meeting, I guess, downtown, and I was floored at the amount of business owners that were in attendance. So I think the downtown business community is ready to see this move forward, and there is a lot of interest. So with that, I would move to support the staff in pursuing this project in 2025.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number six under new business, consider a task order to support wastewater treatment plant interim improvements. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, this is kind of a follow-up to the item that I presented last week, the budget amendment item. We received a task order proposal from AE2S that would give us support in the interim improvements at the wastewater treatment facility. Notably, the task order is split up into two phases, with about one-third of the task order geared for Phase One, which would target kind of the high-impact replacements that could be made. At that point in time, we would plan on pausing, seeing if the wastewater treatment facility staff felt that those improvements met their needs, and if not, continue on to Phase Two. So we structured it in a way where we feel like we might find some cost savings related to that budget amendment last week. It's our recommendation to approve the amendment, or approve the task order as presented so that we could get going with the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, but I can answer any questions that you might have.
To define task order, could you give me a better definition of what a task order is?
Mayor Commissioner Roar, a task order, maybe be better stated as an engineering service agreement. We do call it a task order when it's a task, when it's a task defined underneath a master service agreement, which we do have with AE2S, related to distribution and collection support for the city. So it could be viewed as an engineering service agreement.
Which defines what the objectives are or scope of the project is.
Correct, yeah. The scope of the, of the services that the firm would provide to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Jerick is there? I wasn't here at the last meeting. Maybe you covered it then. Is there an anticipated timeline on that control panel replacement?
Mayor Commissioner Schoberg, as far as timeline, I would imagine that is as soon as possible. I don't know what the actual timeline is. Ryan might have a better idea, you know? As soon as possible is the right answer, I've been told.
Well, it's the answer I was looking for, so thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions for Jerick? If none?
I'll move to approve the task order with AE2S as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number seven under new business, consider the 2025 reconstruction project, Monte Drive Plan specification and authorization to advertise for bids. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, we are far enough along in the Monte Drive 2025 reconstruction project that we are requesting authorization to advertise for bids. We're at about 95, 98% finished with the plans, with just a few more tweaks to be made with, and stamp from the engineering firm. General update on this project, we sent out letters and had a public input meeting, and we've not, we've received fairly favorable feedback. We are anticipating a significant amount of state water commission funding on this project. If there's any specific questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer them, but we're recommending approving plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement of this project.
Just remind us how many water breaks we've had in the neighborhood?
Mayor, I have that number prepared, if I can pull up the document here. I pulled up this water main break, so it looks like 27, I think, with the most recent, which occurred after I put this graph together. We had 26 since 2008 and 27 after I made this graph, so.
And we'll probably have a few more before we start construction.
Especially with this weather.
Yep. Any other questions for Jerick? If not?
I move to approve the plans, specifications, and authorize the advertisement of the project.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar and a tie, and a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number eight under new business, consider the Sunset Drive Interchange Project Decision Document. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioner, the North Dakota Department of Transportation has been active with meet and hunt in the design of the Sunset Drive interchange reconstruction. Right now, that project, I think, is slated for 2027 on the tip, but the DOT is going to try and push that as fast as they can, and I've heard optimistic estimates of starting in 2026. So we're kind of approaching this quickly. The draft decision document that the NDOT provided us included two alternatives. Each alternative would include the installation of a single-point urban interchange-type intersection at the interchange itself. This would be a, an improvement that would include kind of all of the exits approaching a single stoplight underneath the intersection. And then both alternatives also included a stoplight improvement at the intersection of Boundary and Sunset. The differences between the two alternatives is the proposed intersection at Sunset Drive and Old Red Trail. Alternative 1A included the proposal for a stoplight-controlled intersection at that, at that intersection, and Option 1B proposed a roundabout at that intersection. And I do have them pulled up. I can go back and forth between them if you want to look at them closer. City staff met the beginning of last week and evaluated these two alternatives, and after review of the document, review of the costs, review of the pros and cons of each intersection, we are recommending to indicate Alternative 1B as our preferred intersection improvement. This would be the roundabout improvement. We are making that recommendation based on reduced crash severity, reduced number of conflict points on the, at the intersection, consistent flow of traffic, and lower long-term maintenance costs for our public works crew. I'm sure, might have some questions regarding this, but that's our, that's our recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question number one, Jerick, the roundabout proposed, current roundabout we have in Mandan at Collins and Old Red Trail is a single lane, correct?
That is correct.
And the new one's going to be a double lane?
Yes, there will be two lanes. I think it'll be two lanes coming in from two of the legs and one lane coming in from two of the legs. But yes, there would be multi-lane components to this roundabout.
Thank you. Question number two, I might be throwing you under the bus a little bit here, but with the anticipated completion of the West End Memorial Highway and the start of Sunset Drive, that's going to take a lot of planning, huh, to coordinate?
Mayor Commissioner Schoberg, absolutely, yes. And included in the draft document, it's not too different between the two alternatives, but they include some robust temporary traffic control plans related to each phase of this project. So a lot of thought has been put into the work zone traffic control for this project, and it will be, but it will be, it needs to have a lot of thought because it's going to be very impactful.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It's going to be impactful in a couple ways. 2026, if it starts, is also the 250th anniversary, so when we're looking at Fourth of July Parade, and we've got the West End now, a memorial highway torn up, we have the Sunset Interchange, the Old Red Trail portion of it tore up, that's going to cause some planning there to move traffic in and out of Mandan during that time. But also, what are the plans to move emergency vehicles east and west through that construction site?
Mayor, I know that, I don't think that we've landed on a, a single approved plan yet, but I know there'd been talks about temporarily storing emergency infrastructure north of the interchange, maybe renting out buildings to store emergency equipment, but...
North and west?
North and west, yeah. Just, just to ensure a response to that area that isn't dependent on the work zone traffic control operating. control operating perfectly. So, I know that's a continued conversation, and Chief Bits, I know, is very concerned about that, and has, is putting a lot of thought into it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jerick?
I was, Jerick, I was trying to think about other areas regionally that utilize roundabouts in an area that I would say is in the city limits of, you know, Collins and Old Red Trail is, but it's not, there's not a lot of businesses surrounding it. You know, I think there's a lot of business traffic and school traffic certainly at this one, potentially. Just curious, if there's any other regional ones in more urban areas than out on a highway?
Mayor Commissioner Heinchan, I am originally from Williston, and Williston has, I think, seven roundabouts within city limits. I do have it pulled up on the map. This is the newest roundabout, which is in kind of a residential area. Twenty-sixth also has a roundabout here, which is mixed-use, probably, area, and has roundabouts continuing west, south along Thirty-second. Fairly, fairly significant commercial traffic around these locations, so they do, they do work, and I, and I know that the NDOT has put a lot of thought into the operation of the proposed roundabout.
Mayor Jerick, my hometown is Hayes, which is about the same size as Mandan, and Vine Street in Hayes is about like a Memorial Highway, a lot of activity, and even they got side streets, and they got five roundabouts, and one of them's a peanut roundabout, and every time I go down, I, I kinda enjoy, it's kinda like you're on a circus ride, you know? But, yeah, it does work very well now to compare to what they had, where they had all these stoplights and all these intersection stuff before it, but it definitely was advantageous to them down there, and it's been there for about three, four years now.
Yeah, Mayor Commissioner Roar, I think that there is, there is some advantages that, that kind of go unspoken, continuous traffic during off-peak hours. I know that I've sat at a stoplight before, waiting for no cars to come from either direction, and wondering why I'm sitting there, and roundabouts allow for just free movement in those situations, yeah.
So, we've, we're also planning to handle the traffic at the middle school, the high school, Red Trail Elementary?
Mayor, yes, we, this includes traffic projections out to 2045, which would include development north of this intersection.
Right, and, yes, but also during the construction as to how to move, it's a considerable amount of traffic through that intersection.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm not sure if they've done level-of-service analysis for the work zone temporary traffic control, but I, I believe a lot, a lot of thought has been put into that as well. I think that they had taken into consider, into consideration, like stacking distances and delay times, acceptable delay times for the temporary improvements during the project.
Okay.
As far as emergency vehicles, Jerick, I was on Mandan Rural Fire for about twenty-three years, and I remember when there was no traffic control at Sunset and Old Red Trail, which allowed, allowed us quicker access to Mandan Rural Fire Station, which is across the street from Cloverdale. Then the traffic signals went up, and it became a nightmare for those of us who lived south of I-94 in the city to get up to our fire station to pull the trucks out. I can only see these roundabouts as, as an advantage for the Mandan Rural Fire Department, and covers seven-hundred-and-fifty square miles of eastern Morton County, with the majority of that being south of Mandan. So, I look forward for our rural firefighters to get that roundabout in there.
Thank you, Mayor, or thank you, Mayor Commissioner.
The length of this project, three years?
Correct. It would be a three-year project, with one phase reconstructing the intersection at Old Red Trail and Sunset, second phase construction, constructing, I think, one of the bridges for the interchange, and then the, and then the third construction season, reconstructing the second bridge, so, yeah.
The interchange, what's the acronym for that?
SPUI.
Yeah, do you have a picture of that?
It would be...
A rendering?
Oh.
That works better than a...
Good point. I wonder if I can pull one up quick?
Technical drawing?
Let's see what comes up. As far as Cheyenne, that'd be a good one. Let's see if we can pull one up here. That might be a good, good example. Our, our intersection, well, here, let me pull this, right here, is a probably a pretty good example. Our intersection, our stoplight intersection would be underneath the bridges, instead of over top of the bridges, which is the way it's shown here. So, all of the traffic converges to a single point, hence the name, and is controlled by a single set of stoplights.
And it would be enhanced pedestrian safety, so the, the middle school kids, it would be designed to be safer for them walking?
Mayor Commissioners, yes, it would be, it includes some significant pedestrian enhancements, including enhancements all the way down to Boundary. But especially the roundabout, we would have shortened pedestrian crossing distances, which would make it more approachable for a pedestrian to make that, make that crossing.
Okay. Any more questions for Jerick? Hearing none. What are your wishes, Commissioners?
I'll move to submit Alternative 1A, B as in boy, as the city's preferred option. Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes.
Item number nine, Consider Resolution Necessary to Create Street Improvement District 236, Downtown Phase One. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, this is the first phase of our down, what we're calling our downtown reconstruction projects. Right now, it is split into three phases. First phase would consist of reconstruction of First Street from Sixth Avenue Northwest to Fourth Avenue Northwest, including Fourth Avenue Northwest and Third, or and Fifth Avenue Northwest between Main Street and Second. This is kind of a mouthful, I, it is kind of shown on the image that I have pulled up on the screen right now. So, Phase One project area is right here, just north of Runnings, and includes, includes these cross streets. We have, we are substantially through the preliminary engineering design on all three phases, phases of this project, and we feel that we're ready to create the district with fairly accurate cost estimates, and that's what we're here for today. I did bring this presentation that KLJ put together to show some of the proposed improvements on this project, which I think were very nicely rendered here. Majority of the project would include the keeping angled parking along First Street, increasing angles, increasing the angle of that angled parking for better safety. It would include increasing the radius of bulb-out corners to offer Public Works Crews better maintenance opportunities. It also includes the upgrade of sidewalk facilities to ADA-compliant standards, and includes some improvements that actually, actually kind of synergize with the alley art project that Andrew had just presented, which includes kind of indication of where alley improvements are going to be made. If there's any questions that you have related to this project, I'd be happy to answer them, but our recommendation is to approve the amendment, or resolutions necessary to create the district.
So, you are gonna do the alley in that district, or?
We are, Mayor, we are setting ourselves up for a, maybe an alley corridor, indicating maybe that people, that drivers could expect to see crossings there. So, we would be making the improvement in the street, not in the alley itself, but in the street approaching the alley.
So, I'm sure there's a good reason, but why wouldn't we do this short section of alley there?
This sort, short section of alley would be slightly out, outside of the project scope.
Can you read that map up again?
So, our, our project essentially ends right here. This alley would continue to the east beyond Phase One project boundaries.
Okay, so in Phase Two, are you including the alleys?
I would have to double-check to see if Phase Two quantities included alley improvements, but I would, I wouldn't think so at this point in time, because this would have been, this is an NDOT project, and our roads have to be functionally classified in order to be eligible.
Okay.
Mayor Jerick, when you talk about the alleys, do our alleys contain a lot of subterranean pipes, different things like that as well?
Mayor Commissioner, yes, the alley in between Main and First, I believe, contained, or is the home of a fairly substantial sanitary sewer pipe. We, we, I think that is a clay tile pipe, and we have on our kind of preliminary capital improvement plans identified a lining project for that pipe.
I was gonna say, the infrastructure of those things under those alleys is probably pretty old, too, and needed to be looked at.
Absolutely, yes, and it's an identified need.
Any other questions for Jerick? Hearing none. What are your wishes?
I move to approve the resolutions to create the improvement district, approve the engineer's report, approve the feasibility report, and approve declaring necessity for Street Improvement District Number 236.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Braun. Further discussion, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes.
Item number ten under New Business Legislative Update, Mr. Neubauer? Thank you, Jerick.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, apologize there wasn't a written update in your packet, was having some technical difficulties getting logged on to the state system, and, but not a whole lot to report this week. The, the discussion regarding property tax, I think they're down to, I think, seven different bills they're looking at. A lot of the other forty-three of them, or other forty-five of them, are making their way into nonexistence, but again, I think they're focusing on seven bills. That comes from a report we heard from a few legislators this afternoon. Focus is always on property tax reform and property tax caps, and the main discussion on the property tax caps deals with whether, whether the taxable valuation should be limited on properties, whether it should include commercial properties or just primary residential properties, and also if the property tax caps are applied to the revenues coming in from property tax or the expenditures being spent. So, there's continued a lot of discussion on all of those fronts as we approach crossover here towards the end of February, where all bills from each side, whether it be the House or the Senate, need to be heard on the floors of each respective party, and in turn passed to the other side. So, there'll be a flurry of activity here in the next few weeks as that crossover date continues. But again, big discussions on property tax reform, and also the amount of money that the state puts in, in the pockets, or in the, in the buckets of whether they're the political subs of parks, counties, cities, schools, and things like that, to help reduce the overall burden to our property taxpayers. So, not a lot new, but certainly a lot of discussion continues.
Any questions?
Jim, just, is the number still, the three percent number cap that, is that the general number that everybody's still talking about?
That is the number. Commissioner Heinchan and Mayor Freilich, this afternoon, when the chairs of the Senate Finance and Tax, and the House Finance and Tax Subcommittee were asked where that number came from, there was a lot of kind of hemming and hawing, pulling straws out of the air, but I think it relates back to some of the work that Representative Hedlund, who's a Chair of Finance and, House Finance and Tax, had done with the Association of Counties over the past seven years. It seemed like three percent increase in, in budgets and revenues seemed to be that number. There's also an understanding, I think, from the legislators now that, that three percent will be different, whether you're in a community that is in decline in population and property valuations versus a community that's in increasing populations and increasing property values. So, there is that recognition. They're not sure, quite sure how to remedy that, because you still need to provide those essential services from water, sewer, roads, police, fire, emergency services, protection. So, they're trying to balance all those needs and come up with a plan that includes both, both those ideas.
Mayor, Jim, is that ninety percent of, of a evaluation, you know, is that still that formula you're gonna stick by for assessing the value of property?
Mayor.
With the ninety percent of market value?
Yep, Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Roar, I don't think there's a, I have not heard any movement to, where is Kimberly? There you are. I don't think there's been any movement on to change that. I think the feeling is if you start changing the true and full value of a piece of property, that, that really becomes a meaningless valuation, the farther you get away from that, versus if you keep it ninety percent of true and full value, at least you know what all properties are comparable to each other within the state, and that's why they would, may look at something in the taxable valuation, because to get to the taxable valuation of a property, you still have to be within ninety to a hundred percent of true and full assessed value.
And is that not placed on the, on what is being sold presently for comparative value of properties? Is that what the formula states, pretty much?
The, Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Roar, again, they're, they're not looking at making a change in the true and full value of a property. Taxable value happens after, I think, you take the full and true value of property times fifty percent, times seven or nine percent.
Nine or ten.
Nine or ten percent, based on whether it's commercial or residential property. So, that's, that nine or ten percent sometime is that number that can be adjusted, versus taking your property valuation, which I think everyone would like to keep consistent, again, so that you can compare properties to one another. And part of the valuation process does include comparable properties that have been bought and sold during that period of time.
My concern is those sales, something that would askew, you know, that, that value by a limited number of property being sold, or maybe some properties are being sold at a very high property rate that are beyond most market values, those things can askew that, but I think, is the formula pretty much set to where that's not so much a problem?
I would, I would say, Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Roar, that our assessors, there's a multiple things that go into the value of your property. I don't, and we don't, we interpret the market, we don't set the market. So, if property, if you have a, have a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house, that we have valued at two-hundred-thousand dollars, and all twenty-five-hundred-square-foot houses are all of a sudden selling for three-hundred to four-hundred-thousand dollars, the market is telling us that your two-hundred-thousand-dollar property is worth more than it was originally, if that helps.
Yeah, well, I know, it's, it's a very difficult formula, and there's some subjectivity to it, and, but one of the things I hear from people out there, that, you know, they ask about this particular part of the property taxes, it has to do with evaluation, how it is achieved.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Roar, I think that is a very good question, and a lot of people do ask that, and we always encourage them, if they have a question on their valuation, to contact our assessor's office. We will come out and make sure that the information that we have is accurate, so that if, if our, the information that we have indicate you've got twenty-five-hundred square feet, but you really only have twelve-hundred square feet, obviously that will affect the valuation of your property, and we will make those adjustments. But again, we always ask if someone has a question on the valuation of their property, and those questions are happening now, that they should come in and make an appointment and talk to our assessors.
And, uh, from my experience with the city, you know, I'll point out, our assessing department is very good. department is very good at going out there and talking to people and, and checking on their concerns, and you know, they, they, they go of and beyond a lot of times to make that communications available to the, to the taxpayer.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Rohr, I would wholeheartedly agree with you, we will, and that's when we get into the, the process of letters going out, if your population, if your property valuation has had a change to it, our first question is, can we come out and look at the property, can we make sure that the information that we have on file is accurate, and then we can go take that next step after that.
For the public that's watching, I just want them to know that, you know, we do the best we can in that area, and if they do have concerns, you know, if, don't be hesitant either to let us know.
Yep. Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Rohr, thank you for the questions, and it's, like I said, that time of the year is coming up, and we're seeing a number of people come in, whether they're applying for the Homestead Tax Credit, or they have other questions on their property, that, again, the first question we ask is, is our information accurate, and then we take those conversations from there.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Newbauer? Thank you, Mr. Newbauer. Let's move on to agenda item key, number one, first consideration of ordinance 1461 related to extension of zoning moratorium, Andrew?
Good evening again, Mayor Freilich and Commissioners. Ordinance 1461, I introduced this at our previous meeting on February 4th, this ordinance would serve the purpose of extending our current moratorium that we have on the kind of processing and development of self-storage uses. If you recall from the 4th, the ordinance was put in place originally as an audit of Mandan's development regulations identified some concerns with the, the level of standard and regulation that we have for the subject use. At the same time as receiving the audit report that identified said deficiencies, we had been kind of hearing from the, the community that there was some interest in the development of self-storage, there's a, kind of a well-documented tie between kind of the viability of commercial growth and development, and some of the, the impacts that this use can have on that goal, so the moratorium was enacted. The extension of, of it with ordinance 1461 would take effect immediately and be in effect until June 31st, at which point the new regulations should be in place. Do you have any questions for me?
Mayor and Andrew, just curious, since we had the previous discussion, has there been any interest from any stakeholders that have contacted your office about this moratorium?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Heinchan, no interest, no questions.
Any further questions? If not, what are your wishes?
I move to approve the first consideration of ordinance 1461.
We have motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion, hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioners, Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We'll move on to agenda item L, other business, and at this point, I will, there is no other business, we are talking about future meeting dates for Board of City Commissioners. Next meeting, February 25th, 2025, at 5:30, special meeting working session here at City Hall, March 4th, 2025, at 5:30 is the regular meeting. March 18th, 2025, at 5:30, regular meeting, and April 1st, 2025, at 5:30, regular meeting, and Board of Equalization meeting at 7:00 PM that night, and at this time, I would turn it over to Commissioner Schoburg for a few words.
Last Tuesday, at this time, I was in a hospital, and had a rather unique situation, situation going on, and had a wonderful, absolutely wonderful crew of physicians, department heads, working together to figure out what was going on. Brutal reality is last Tuesday, my survival to Wednesday morning was a flip of the coin. Our pastor came to the hospital and did the prayers. Wednesday morning, Shane's wife, Katie, and Dr. Crawford performed surgeries on me. Before we got into the operation surgery room, Dr. Crawford asked me if I wanted to have a prayer, so the entire surgical team gathered around my cot, we did the Lord's Prayer. I know that a lot of you folks in the viewing audience, as well as many of the, the folks here in this commission room, were, were there with me. Spiritual help through the power of prayer cannot be calculated, but there's a definite reason that, that I'm sitting here in this commission room tonight, so from the bottom of my heart, those of you that are watching on TV, and those of you that are here, let's just say a very, very heartfelt thank you to each and every one of you. Your presence was felt, I'm not Mandan strong yet, but the farm-to-market road's in sight, so we're going to get better, and we'll be back with, probably, no, I will be back with more compassion and mercy, thanks to you guys, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
It's good to have you back, Craig. And at this point, we are at the end of the meeting, and as always, be kind to your neighbor, and it's onward and upward, Mandan, meeting is adjourned.